Okay, I call this meeting of the Kensington School Board to order at 6:06 PM. I will open up public input at 6:06 PM. It'll be open for thirty minutes. Does anybody?
I have to pause, is this a time?
Sure.
Actually, wait, before you do that, can I, I would like to read the Nat-Len and Allison.
Okay.
First, okay. So, this Kensington School Board meeting is located on Indakina. Is that how I pronounced it right? Yeah, okay. Which is the traditional ancestral homeland of the Abenaki, Pennecook, and Wabanaki peoples past and present. We acknowledge and honor with gratitude the land and waterways, and the Al-Nobak, which are the people who have stewarded in Dakina throughout the generations. We will teach others to know and honor Native Americans.
I showed the kids the, that. They were so excited to see their thing on the official document.
That's great. Oh, the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's awesome. So, please.
Okay, and they send you.
The letters!
The letters.
This is the best part of being on school board. I'm so excited. I'm so excited. Okay, so, you want to explain what this is?
So, the letters, capital T, capital L, are.
Trademark.
Yes. Are a typical third grade thing where they're working on their persuasive writing skills, talking about how when you wanted to persuade somebody about something, you should have reasons, you should be using your best poetic words, it's different than begging. And they think of something that would benefit the school, and then you get to think there. And it has to be something that everybody could benefit from, not just them personally. And then they write a letter to the school board requesting their thing. There's some interesting requests. I think that you will enjoy reading them.
I can't wait.
You obviously do not have to honor the requests. We talked about how things cost money, and you can't just come up with the money and budget. Yeah, we went, we went a little bit like just, just over. They didn't even know that the money from the budget came from the town, so. We went over that briefly, and they realized they couldn't ask for something like a second story to the school, which was really a popular thing they wanted.
Or air conditioning.
Yeah.
Nobody wanted air conditioning, except for me. My letter is in there.
I'm trying so hard. So, I think last time we did this, we each took, like, one of us took it home, read them all, and then just dropped it off.
The other person knows? We divided them.
Yeah, but, oh, I, because I thought that we.
We divided them, then reported.
We all got a chance to read all of them, and then.
I think we did afterwards, but we divided them, reported back, and then if we weren't.
Alright, then that's what we'll do. So, we'll divide them three ways. We each take them home, and then what we do is, we write letters back. And just thank them for their, for their request, and, and, you know, we'll consider it or whatever.
Let them know if it's an agenda item.
Let them know if it's an agenda, yeah, right, exactly.
The Gaga pit came out of one of the, like.
Well, the Gaga pit was already behind.
It was already in motion, but that was definitely one of the letters that.
It was actually Chloe's, and I just got it and let her think that she. And then, and then it went through the PTO and through the school board.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's not an example of like an actual.
Yeah, I like, in the past, they asked for shovels for the playground, and they, they got some new shovels, that kind of thing.
Good. Awesome.
It's really cool. Alright, thanks.
Years ago, the fourth and fifth grade petitioned to have morning recess.
Oh, yeah.
Because they didn't have, morning recess was just, came at three, and they felt like fourth and fifth graders should have recess as well, and they had very good reasons why.
Great.
Well, they should also have a morning recess, and they got that.
That's awesome. So, sometimes it works. Their persuasion is quite good. In high school, we petitioned to be able to wear pants, and we got it. Sorry. It was a Catholic school, and we had to wear skirts. It's not like we couldn't wear anything. We were wearing skirts, and the girls wanted to wear pants. That's, that's the background that was not in. Okay, I'll just move right along. So, thank you very much. To the third grade class, we will split those up and go from there. So, um, oh, a non-public session may be called at any time in accordance with chapter one, ninety-one A, three, two, and then A, B, C, D, E, R, I. So, going over the minutes, the public meeting minutes from November ninth, twenty twenty-two. There was one thing that I actually noticed, and it was that, it was just a little thing. We were talking about, it's that Wellness Wake Up wasn't called by the right name. Just a little thing. Where is it?
It said Welcome Wellness, and it says, it should say Wellness Wake Up.
Wellness Wake Up, yep.
Top of page three.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes. That's it. That's the only thing I found. Did anybody else have any changes? Okay, alright, so, does anybody want to make a motion to accept?
To accept the public meeting minutes.
As amended?
As amended.
Alright.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the non-public meeting minutes. I'll, I'll move that we accept those as written.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty, aye. Alright, committee reports. Policy Committee. So, we've got Policy J E V, which Becky, you're gonna talk to us about?
Yep, so this is the most recent version with all of the edits, and thank you so much for all of your policy suggestions. I'm looking at that with like a policy eye. It's super, super helpful. So, we've got a lot of strike-throughs, new language, trying to catch some of the making things gender, gender neutral moving forward as well. And I think this is kind of where we stand. I think after Josh had made his last suggestions, I went back in and took another shot at the process language, and that's the one in green. Just so that there's some understanding of what that, that would entail, that in this time period, as far as a screening. Not necessarily identifying the names of the screenings, but just know that there would be screenings for academic readiness and social emotional development of students that are requesting their early entrance.
Okay.
That makes sense to me, Becky. The only reason why I highlighted that initially is that it's something that, like, it's, it's a process that you would have to go through in your calling note here. So, I just don't know whether or not we want to draw a reference to that or not.
I kind of feel like we need to, because I, I don't want it to be so loose that it seems subjective. So, I feel like I need to be able to have some process in place so that I'm not screening one child for this, and a different child the next year for something else, that our screenings are, we're looking for the same sort of readiness for kids.
Okay.
If that, that makes sense.
And it's only if their birthday falls within a month of our.
October was sort of that window where they could.
Yeah.
Ask for the screenings to happen for.
Okay.
And the, the, the other suggestion I had, Becky, and this is not material, but that first sentence, like, leading into the birth certificate, was wondering if that might be able to fit somewhere within, like, maybe before the process sentence.
Yep. Yeah, I actually, so I actually, I started changing before I hit the editing thing on, so that, that was the first sentence of the policy, and then I realized I was editing and then turned the edit feature on.
Because, because normally, like, when we're looking at these from the policy committee perspective, we have either the model or the original to work with. And if I'm not mistaken, this one, I think it starts off with a student and not opening something.
It starts with.
Here's the current one right here, Josh. Oh, this, okay.
Yeah, this, it does start with the birth certificate.
Got it, okay. Alright, if that's how it starts, then that's perfect.
I have a question. Is the birth certificate, I, I don't know how it works if, like, a, a family moves in from another country. We've got immigrants here, like, does that, does that affect? Like, does a birth certificate, is that something that anybody would have from any country? Or is that like?
Like, it's.
A proof, some proof of, your kids don't have them, yeah, because they weren't born here. So, like, so, yeah, I don't know if that, if that's unintentionally gonna create a problem for somebody when, like, a slightly different wording would, but it's fine.
You could say a birth, if you really wanted to get, Becky, you could say a birth certificate or a equivalent document or something like.
Oh, okay.
From a contributory, I, something like that, but yeah, I think.
I just didn't, I didn't know if that would be a problem, but, I mean, you went through that, so if it was a problem, then. Okay. Alright, so.
Okay, I'm not sure what it's called in another country, so you could say or equivalent document.
Or equivalent document, yeah. So, are we voting on this?
So, you can either take it, this could be a first read, and come back, and we can finalize it. It does not have to go back to the policy committee. It's specific to Kensington. I'd say we remain here.
Yeah.
Um, so it's, it's really, you know, that's why we tried to give it to you in advance. Obviously, we, we went through this scenario earlier in this year, and, you know, Becky did a nice job working with other elementary principals to get some information for the version that she gave to you, so it's whatever you're comfortable with. We would like to take a vote to make some changes, because we feel it would be in the best interest of kids coming to our schools.
Yeah, I would love for it to be a first read to be able, because I know I've had a couple families contact me knowing this was on the agenda, but not able to make it tonight. So, just for them to be able to see it in the minute, see what we talked about, and then maybe bring it back next month for a moment, that gives other families a chance to weigh in.
Should, uh, can I move to have it attached to the minutes, or?
So, if it's.
Or how will it be made available to them?
The current one, so they would, if it's a first read, we can attach what Becky provided as a first read.
Can we attach this? Yeah. Yeah.
The original stays intact until we change that.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, we can have this as a first read, and then in our next packet, we'll have, you know, whatever changes of today.
Perfect.
Be first.
That's great, and then that gives people a chance to weigh in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for saying that, thank you.
Alright, so Safety and Security. Okay. Superintendent Evaluation Committee, we have not met, we're working, we're just still working on the goals and, uh, working with Dr. Ryan to solidify those and go from there. The School Study Update, we have a meeting next.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. So, we haven't met in a while, but we will on Tuesday. Okay, General Correspondents?
I have just one piece from the town that, um, the building is being assessed, which happens, you know, every five years or something like that. And just if we didn't want that to happen, we needed to notify them and write it by tomorrow.
Okay.
It's just a, it's an external walk around. It's not an internal assessment. They just walk their pregnant.
So, just attach the assessments.
Uh, yeah.
They do it in here.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Do you need to read it, or are you able to just attach it? It's pretty, it's pretty standard.
I think you probably all got them.
Yeah.
Also, yeah.
The same letter.
Sorry, we didn't even pass it down, if you guys want to see.
Yeah, you're good.
Alright, SAU Communications and Community Engagement Committee, meeting in January?
That, that's supposed to be discussed at that joint board meeting in January.
Okay.
It's one of the agenda items, so.
Great. Alright, so, Business and Financials. I, now, I looked over and saw Molly and waved to her, and then realized, oh, that's a photograph. I just waved to a photograph.
Yeah, I did wave real quick to her. But, I, so, Michelle, was if you can press the manifest, bring it over to me, sign.
We said, oh.
That is taken care of.
And so, in your board pack, there was a prior financial. So, we have about nineteen thousand dollars added from the prior month. Um, I did put, um, what is on the column next to the books, and it's just over in the snowplowing, which hopefully we don't have good winter, but. Did anyone have any questions on the current year funding, Michelle?
No.
Okay.
Well, I guess, the, the one question that I have, we're on the trust fund section. Is it just coincidental that those balances are the exact same?
They were established in the same year.
Yeah, and we put the same amount.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, but we do get trust records, but you might see a little bit of future scheme, but we get them very rarely, so, um, we typically only see a change once a year, once we add some trust funds.
Okay.
So, next up is the draft budget review. So, I believe last time we met, we had handed out the draft budget and also fully included it in the board pack. Um, I included, if you think, we actually included the high-level pie chart, which kind of shows overall the different categories. It is what I'm doing this year across all the districts. It's like, most of the budgets are people. So, what I've done is I put in our personnel report, um, by account number. So, if you have questions on, in any of the accounts, we listed exactly. So, if you had a question on how many teachers we have, there's thirteen listed. Or how many A's we have, um, there's two under regular A and six under specialized A. And it shows exactly who's in each of those positions. And then lastly, we included the line-by-line default, uh, sorry, the line-by-line budget, I should say. And we did have several rounds of review with Becky. It is a large increase, but it's a large increase based off of student need and legal requirements to provide to students. And so, I did take a look at the default, and the default is about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand less. And the reason why is, in the default, you can't include positions unless they were in the previous budget. So, when we pulled forward money and hired the extra kindergarten teacher, that can't be in the default, because that hasn't been in the approved budget voted on by the taxpayers yet.
So, we would lose, if the default were, if, if, if we lost the budget in the election and that we got the default, we would lose a kindergarten teacher?
Oh, well, you'd lose that budget, and we'd have to figure out what could be cut to be able to support them.
Okay.
So, budgets are always one bottom right number. But unfortunately, because that position hasn't been in the past budget that has passed with the voters, I couldn't include it in the default. And so, other things that are not included are increases for non-CBA folks. So, the front office, the principal, the paras, um, any increases on utilities, um, pretty much everything related to maintenance, the increase on first student, and any increase on food service, which we're seeing a lot because of the price of food.
Yeah.
So, that's really causing that one hundred and thirty-seven thousand delta between your proposed and the default.
Okay.
So, what I, I did was I copied, um, our, the proposed budget that has all of our notes on it, and I highlighted the things that we can actually touch.
Okay.
Oh, my gosh. So, like, things, um, like salaries and things whatnot, we just can't touch it. So, only, so we, we were gonna go through line by line, but only go through things with the highlights, because those, that's really all that's discretionary. And it's really just things like how much we put in for professional development, how much we put in for supplies, how much we put in for replacement furniture, how many books we buy.
Yeah, you'll see most of it, but if you.
Yeah. So, I know, I think Allison had requested, let's just talk about the things that we can actually make changes to, because we can't.
I imagine we should probably pick out the bigger items and go through that. I mean, there's a lot of line items on here.
Yeah. I know, Molly does this for like eight towns. Ours is little comparatively to the other ones that she does. So, yeah, I'm happy to go through, like, line by line and just talk about them, what's in them. I mean, I've got notes on there, like, what's included in all of them, and.
Yeah.
And I have to say, we do build budgets based off of need, not off of want, and.
Right.
We had several, several rounds of review with Becky and Chris trying to identify areas who we really trimmed in the best that we could, and I give credit to Becky for putting together a really good budget.
Does it, and this is a question that, I don't know if I have, this is maybe a stupid question. Um, I don't know how to say that more eloquently today. Is, are there any, any of these that can be covered by grant funds? Like, is there any grant, any money that we can cover by grant funding instead?
We have got about every penny spent in our grants.
Okay.
Either on staffing, professional development, uh, needs for special education through our IDA.
Yeah.
And you'll see the IDA funds were cut based on our SAU being able to do by need, and it's by town.
Yeah.
So, where Dr. Bennett, in the past, would be like, oh, you need support for this, or you need this equipment. I have a pool of money she can't. We get an allocation of about ten thousand dollars, and that goes really quickly here, so. We would normally look at that. Um, the money in our grants has been reduced.
Okay.
And Esters is running out, so we'll be paying for staff from Moretta Esters, so that will have to be what we did at some point too, so.
We do typically get a new REAP grant, since the, um, like rural school grant each September, which is usually about ten thousand dollars. But I, I don't wanna count on it when, and take something out thinking we're getting it, and then for some reason, we don't get it next year, I don't.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't, do you want to just kind of like go through yellow line by yellow line and talk about them?
I, I kind of think we have to have a goal in place before we do that. Like, if we're thinking that twelve point seven nine is too high, like, what isn't too high? Just wanting to work back into, and then see what we might be able to pull from.
I, I, I do just want to say that, that it, it, most years, that's what we do. We pick, we kind of pick a number, and we say, we would like to not go above three percent or whatever. This year, it seems, it seems like there's nothing normal about this year. Like, in terms of this budget increase. It's just a, it's a whole, like, perfect storm of grant money running out, and sudden new mandatory needs, and a whole bunch of other stuff. But am I, am I right that next year, things should even out a bit more?
You shouldn't see the twelve percent increase.
We shouldn't see that much of an increase. Right, but this is, this is an increase that needs to happen because of the circumstances that we're in. So, normally, I would say, yes, let's look at that, but I, and, and I don't necessarily think we shouldn't. But, but I, I, I just, I want to keep in mind that this year is, it's, it's, it's an anomaly.
Yeah.
But, um, I mean, yeah, we could do that. We could try to bring it down to ten percent. I mean, that's an arbitrary number, but.
Super arbitrary, but. And is that, do we, this might be another dumb question. Is there, like, do we know how much money that is? Like, do we know how much?
Molly would know.
I just, I can't, I can't think of.
Um, I don't have it off the top of my head, but I can look it up.
It would be like forty-three.
Forty-three thousand dollars. Or not.
Forty, yeah.
Right.
Yes.
So, I don't, I guess we can. I guess the question becomes, do we think?
I'm curious what the total is of all the, what is the total of the, the things we can touch?
It's a great question. And I guess it comes down to passing a budget, right? And so, do we think a ten percent increase, is that that much more likely than a twelve percent increase to pass? I mean, like, are we gonna sit here for an hour and debate this for utility? Like, I, I guess that's.
Well, it was fourteen, wasn't it? Let's start with that.
Was it? Right, I like that. Optimistic, you're right there. We need to win.
When we have a ten percent increase, the total would be four million, forty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars, which is a hundred and two thousand, five forty-five less than we're at right now.
So, we're looking, so we're looking for about a hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, hundreds, correct. So, like, I guess we'll play devil's.
Yeah, I mean, do we, do we, do we just put this forward? I mean, I guess that's.
Hey, I, well, I certainly want to go through, because I want us to have gone through it, you know what I mean? Um, but I think we, that might be what ends up happening, but.
I guess I would like us to go through it with the mentality of, let's go through it to educate ourselves, not to say, can we cut off this thousand-dollar item that is not gonna make a bit of difference?
Right, well, yeah.
You know what I mean, you know what I mean, like.
Absolutely. I'm just saying that I don't want us to just not go through.
No, yeah, but I just don't want us to spend, you know, debating when we're not, when it's not.
Well, like, I mean, it comes down to some, like, we've got, um, sixty dollars per student under supplies by a hundred points. So, if we say, no, we'll do fifty dollars per student, that saves you fifteen hundred dollars. So, that's the sort of, like, I don't want to call it nickel and diming, but like, that's essentially. But if we do that through all the items, there's potential for, say, are we gonna come to a hundred thousand dollars? I don't think so, but.
Yeah.
But that's the sort of conversation, is like, well, next year, we get fifty dollars per student and not sixty dollars per student, or.
What about looking purely at the changes, though? Like, if we can see the dollars in budget change, if we. And this is me just saying it, not knowing how the math is gonna work out, but. Is that, might that be a better way to look at it? Is that would bring us back to more of a neutral, even budget year over year? Or is that not the way this is working?
You mean, for like the first one, it's a hundred percent increase?
Well, yeah, like, overall, we have a twelve percent increase. So, if we look at all of the budget change items, and we think about maybe bringing them, like, for discussion purposes, we bring them back to zero, is that gonna help us at all, or am I thinking we love the math wrong?
Well, I think that is where we start. We, when we build it, it's like, what do we need? So, it does start at zero, because we, and I, like, we literally enter each one of these new every year. Nothing rolls over.
Yeah, Becky is correct. We only think that rolls over is when I hit hold on the salary.
Sounds agree.
So, like, I'll go, so, when we're building the budget, I'll go to Kristen, and I'll be like, how much should we spend on laminating last year? You know, like, what, what did it cost, actual cost of laminating? So, I have like a more accurate number of the year versus like, okay, what did our folders cost us, like, you know?
Yeah, like, that's something I'm thinking, I'm like, well, we can reuse the folders, but that's three hundred dollars. Three hundred down for my hundred thousand.
It's not my kids' fault, it's their.
I know, I know, I know. They, they get a little.
Maybe some duct tape patching up there, which is totally, I'm all for.
Yeah, I guess the reason why I'm saying that is because those are all increases. So, if we, if those are flexible items that have been highlighted, maybe we look at those and see if those are ones where we can bring them down.
Yeah, that's fine, that's, we can have that conversation for sure.
I just don't know that it's gonna be beneficial longer. Like, if I look at the first page, we're gonna save four grand if we brought that back to neutral, which I don't think is gonna do anything for us, but I don't know if there's big ticket items.
And also, I don't think it's a good idea to cut out things like professional services, curricular development.
No, I'm just thinking about this purely from an artist's perspective.
Yeah, right, right. I'm just curious, I, I guess, yeah, I want, I want to, I want to look and figure out what, what is the number? If, if, if all of this was just, what is the total of the, of the highlighted?
I think Chris is putting that in his head right now.
Yeah.
In his head.
Maybe it just needs to be said out loud before we have this conversation, that this is a really terrible conversation to have to have.
Oh, my god, yeah.
And I know we don't want to cut things like professional development, and, and I'm not saying that's what we're gonna do, but like, if we wanted to, you know, just to be honest, look at this, and we don't want to have to go to that default budget assumption, this, this year would actually.
You're talking roughly thirty thousand to change.
So, the, the highest we can change is thirty thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, so then, so then, I mean, what, what percentage difference would that even bring us?
If we're at twelve point seven, then it, it won't even bring you below twelve, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, this is why I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah. And, and, and that in combination with the fact that I know that you didn't throw in every single possible.
There's a lot of copying paper in here.
It's pretty, it's true. It's a pretty stringent, uh, uh, list to begin with. Yeah, I think, I, I mean, I, I think this is just what it is.
If you go back to thirty thousand dollars spread out over a town, is that, it's gotta make a break, I guess. I mean, it's just, it's not where the bulk of the, the change is.
Yeah, the, yeah.
But that makes your self-point too, like, if you, if we go through this exercise and we gain less than a percent, like, what, does that matter when you're talking about twelve point seven nine or something?
That's, that's what I'm, that's kind of why, that's the only reason why, I mean, that's. That's, that's what I'm, that's kinda why, that's the only reason why, I mean, that's, that's the only reason, but that's why I think we should do it. So that we can say, we've done it and then this is what we came up with and it saves us.
I, I think.
Six hundred and twenty dollars, yeah, right.
I think doing it though is that we have the yellow figures.
Yeah.
It's, it's been done.
Right.
And we know that the, the math adds up to not even a percent that we have.
Right, yeah.
So to me, that is the exercise.
Uh, yeah, I mean, yeah, I agree.
I don't, I don't think we can.
And I'm not seeing anything that seems really all that expendable anyway.
It took out thirty thousand, I think it was going down to eleven point nine seven.
Oh, we did, we're getting right below that twelve threshold.
I don't, Molly, why? Even it, but we would have to cut everything in yellow.
Every, every addition we made. Yeah.
Yeah. But it's not, those aren't even additions. Those are just.
That's the change, like the change over last year. So there was an increase over last year. That's what you added up. It's a thirty thousand increase from us.
Those are, yeah, the change, the deadline.
Okay.
Yeah. Roughly thirty, yeah. So like all the budget change figures, whether they are or not, that'll get us to the four seventy-two ninety-six.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I took out thirty thousand from the post, is how I did it.
Yeah.
Right. Eleven point nine seven? I'm just, I'm just getting my arguments ready, ready now.
So it's nine and four percent though, yeah.
No. Okay.
Molly, what, what is the percentage of inflation that we saw across the country this year?
Uh, I think it's between eight and nine percent.
Eight and nine percent?
I thi- I believe so.
Yeah, I think that's what she said.
Yeah, so I mean, if you're looking at inflation at eight or nine percent nationally, we're at twelve, right? But we had to add staff because of the needs of students.
Yeah. Yep.
So if you just looked at that and that was the argument that we had, I mean.
Yeah, I, there's just, I, this is not frivolous. Like, there's nothing about this that it doesn't like sweat blood. That's, that's just what this is.
I mean, we were, I, I will be completely honest, Becky and I sat and I said, she said, do I try to cut anything? I said, what?
What, yeah.
I did ask several times.
And I said, no, you can't. We need to present this, cause this is everything that we would need.
This is everything we need to cut.
We could cut a thousand dollars here and there. We could still program, but cutting out six thousand dollars for student supplies.
Right.
What's the benefit? We're gonna make it up as parents anyways, right, so.
Well, right.
Yeah, and that's what, when it comes down to what you're paying, is it.
Right, and student body, we're cutting student body. To me, that just doesn't feel right to, that's where we have to cut, but that's the reality of it, so.
No.
Yeah, I just looked at that and said, uh, annual inflation for the US is, it's actually seven point one now after being at seven point seven.
Okay.
That's just a quick search though. And I guess it depends what source you look at. And I know in neighboring districts, they're talking about giving um non-union staff significantly more raises as well. So they're, they're, they're recognizing the cost of inflation in neighboring districts as well.
Yep. Okay. All right, so what's our next step?
Um, so if you're um, good with the number, we can prove it tonight. What we do in January is come back, we'll have the warrant articles written for you. So this will be the one that however you wanna use the two trust funds since we don't have a contract. So it'll just be the three warrants, but we'll finalize that for you to put forward. I'll invite Harold to come in and talk with us too. Harold Bragg, our moderator, can talk about the process and walk you through that. The only other thing is, you know, I just throw it out there, cause I feel like I have to. I mean, you know, you could reduce by using some of your trust fund balances for projects.
I was about to ask.
So that's an option you do have, but do you wanna decrease those in any capacity? So I mean, if you cut twenty-five out, you're still about thirty thousand in there, so that's fifty grand that you could use for projects.
Right.
That's the discretion of the board. That's not the discretion of us. So I throw that out there. If you feel fifty grand would get you under that twelve percent, is that something you're willing to do, knowing that if there is a major issue with a student coming in or having to leave, we don't have it funded?
Right.
So it's nice to create it, but we're not at a place where I think you could really tap in unless you really feel that getting under twelve is gonna do something for you in front of the community.
I don't know what it is.
No, I don't feel, I think, I think.
I think that could be an explanation though, that you looked at those trust funds and you realize it, but you don't feel that's the.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we, we have them there. If something, here's the, this is already very bare bones.
Right.
So, so already, we're, we're in a risky position if something happens. So we have the trust funds there for that. Um, now, we also have to decide how much to put, how much to request to put into trust funds this year. And I, I'm thinking maybe this might be a good year not to request anything.
Sure.
Uh, to offset that.
Maybe that's what we do instead.
Yeah, we usually request, I think, ten thousand each.
She started out with twenty and then we've done ten the last couple of years.
Because of COVID, yeah. And um, so, so I'm just thinking, since it's such a huge bump, maybe this might be a year that we just take off from adding to the trust fund.
I think we sit with that and then we see what next year brings. We could.
Yeah.
What if next year it's not a twelve percent?
And so the other thing that I would just put out there, when we talk to the community, you could try to do a bond payment for the big roof project for the HVAC, but if that goes no, you're left without that being part and you cannot fix it over a year.
Okay.
So that's why we've not recommended a warrant or to have as a bond payment on the warrants. So we, that's why we put it in the budget, so. And that's a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, but we realize that's something that needs to be done to keep this full operation.
Right, right, right.
So I think there's rationale to why you're twelve point five. Inflation, contractual uh, numbers, repairs to the HVAC and that's really it. And then nondiscretional was like we just discussed, thirty thousand dollars.
Yep, okay.
Four million dollar budget is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
All right, so um, we, are we making a motion about not requesting ten thousand dollars for each of the things or we're just, we're just approving this now?
Just approve the budget now. We'll bring you the three warrant articles.
Right, right.
And at that time, you can decide if you wanna say we're not gonna put anything there or you will. So we'll write it as we years, years pass and then you can decide on a dollar figure there.
Okay.
And then that was what we'll need to be able to for our, uh, being in February.
Okay.
Okay.
Chris, where's, where's the um HVAC?
If you look at the, the project line.
Yeah, and this is an older version, but it's on page nine of twelve under the facilities. Um, the, it's a hundred and nine thousand is, is what it's.
Is it, it's not on that summary?
It's a net repair and maintenance.
It's under the, yeah, under the notes. So the total line is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, a hundred and nine of that is the roof cost.
Okay.
In this page, Josh, do you have this one? Put the notes on it. It's all the way down.
Page nine.
Other facilities.
Okay.
Oh, there it is. Hello. That's a nice big number.
Yeah.
And some of the notes are not. Seventeen point five tons over the top.
Good, okay.
So that is it. When you come back in January, Chris, will you have something kind of drafted? If we, do you wanna do a bond?
We could, Molly and I would work on that. There'd be different options for you.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, just to have the option and think about it and.
So we, we can. Yeah.
Don't look at what the totals say in the notes. Look at the total on the actual budget line.
Yeah. Yeah. Can Joe come to the, uh, the hearing?
In January, sure.
Depends on how much of a there he can be expecting.
Do you think that would be a good idea?
I mean, I thought you were kidding, but. Well, I think it's, I mean, it's something that we've already deferred for a year. It was on our, our plan to have done last year and so we've already deferred it one year.
Right. Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, so um, I'll move that we approve this budget.
I can second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, wait, this says that the budget change is eleven point eight.
I know, this is all, this is, my notes is an older version.
Okay, got it.
We had someone sick who can print this for us. Um, so that's why we give you enough data.
The one in the packet. It's fine. The, my, the one that's in the packet has all the correct numbers, but this, my, my notes are in this one.
Yes, I got it, okay.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I was like, we did it! No, no, we didn't.
Just kidding.
Yeah, so the last update went to twelve point seven.
Uh.
Thank you.
Lovely.
And then the last item is adequacy. So in addition, so, so you have your budget, the budget is the cost side. And then on the revenue side, you have adequacy and then all your local and state federal sources, like food service sales, earning uninvested, any cat fee that you might get, um, and that offsets what you have to raise in taxes. So in addition, the state is decreasing our adequacy. So it, it basically the revenue to offset the budget that you have in your hand is going down, which means that more has to be raised in taxes to support the budget that you have in your hands. So that, all those tax figures were, can you email from David Ryan? It is out of our control at the school level, um, and it is a state level issue.
Okay.
So in addition to the rising costs in the budget, you're also gonna have less revenue to offset the costs, which means the tax rate would have to be higher to support what's in the budget.
Okay.
Should we have the tax rate?
Not really. So that adequacy draft that David gave you is still draft. You don't usually finalize that till springtime, right, Molly? Or get the finalized draft from them till the spring?
But that, that adequacy is an estimate. However, in that packet David sent out is the final tax rate that was just set this past November. Um, and if you don't see it, I can find it in seventy. What else is, I'll pull the tax card and I'll send it to the frame.
Thanks, Molly.
Twenty point five five, I think.
That sounds about right, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I have it right here. I'll share it with all of you.
You've had a day.
Can I, Molly, go push it down to everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah, Cooper, that's what I'm coming home from soccer right now.
It's actually nineteen point eight six. I looked at twenty twenty.
I was gonna say that, I, that first one you said I do recognize, I just don't know if it's still up to current.
Yeah, it looks like nineteen point eight six is twenty twenty-two's data.
I do have an Excel file where I do a side-by-side comparison of all the tax rates of the district, but I'm happy to send to you.
There it is, okay.
I said, I reset that letter for Molly.
Thank you.
How's it house?
Yeah.
Should be on the very last page.
He said on the last page.
Sit down.
Oh, that's not what I was looking at.
Go right here, you know what I just sent to you?
Oh, you just sent it?
I sent it to you. It was from what David had sent for the tax report.
There it is.
Declan just lost a tooth in my driveway, so I might.
Nice.
Awesome, Declan!
Oh, now you get to play truth or dare today?
Yeah.
My dad's freaking out.
Your chest is real.
Molly, I think we're, you're, you need Molly for anything else.
No, Molly.
No, we're good.
Go get, go get healthy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks, Molly.
Bye, thanks guys. Bye.
Hi, thank you, Molly. Um, I'm just gonna take a quick minute to close public comment, unless the public has anything else they'd like to say?
Oh, it's awesome.
Okay, thanks. So six fifty-one. Mrs. Cole has spoken. All right, so. Principals report.
Principal report.
Yeah, we've got two parts. Am I doing special at first?
Yeah, you can just do it.
Yeah, well, Renee was so helpful in pulling some numbers together so that we can share some special ed data. It's double sided from the back.
Sorry, suddenly I have a jingle for everything. I apologize. Um, so I just got it, so I was just gonna give you a second just to look at it before we chatted. The front is just, uh, the front graph is really just a number of students per grade um that are identified um under one of the categories of special education. And the pie chart on the back um shows you um the different categories of identification and, and how many of our students fall under each category.
Could, uh, speech, language. Whatever that is, can you, can you?
Yeah, um, we've got developmental delays, speech and language, um, specific learning disability.
Okay.
Autism and deafblind.
Okay, thank you.
So as a comparison to other schools and to the state, our special education numbers um generally fall a little lower than the state averages as far as number of students identified. Our current identification rate is fifteen point two percent and the New Hampshire average is seventeen point four. So we're just a little under the state average as far as identifications. Um, and you can see on the pie chart on the back as well, um, you know, we do have a variety of students with a variety of needs. Um, and some of those students have primary disabilities and then also secondary disabilities. So some students could carry multiple coatings. Um, this is just representing their primary disability, but some do have secondary and even some have tertiary disabilities, so.
So this pie chart only, it only includes one?
Represents their primary disability, yeah.
Right, okay.
It includes all students, but they're categorized by their primary disability.
Right, okay. But it means that one student represented here could also be?
Yeah. Um, so on that back page where you're looking at the, the pie chart and then Renee did a great job of pulling um the IDA federal grant funding and the bullets, if you follow them down, show the unfortunate decline in our IDA funding here in Kensington and what we're expecting for next year. It's a pretty significant decrease over what we're accessing this year and in previous years. Um, but, I mean, I'm super proud of our special team here. I think we do an amazing job with our students and meeting students' needs.
Yeah.
Um. I'm not always a data person, I'll be honest, especially when we're talking about kids and what they need. Uh, but I think it's important for you to see really how comprehensive the services are that we're providing for kids in the building and, um, and kind of think about what that, those budget items go to. And we do, um, we do have a lot of supports for our kid in this, kids in this building with um speech and language, occupational therapy, physical therapy, American Sign Language, edu- educational audiology, assistive technology, orientation, mobility. I mean, um, we really do offer a lot of supports and services for our students and, um, we have really, really good people on our team here.
Yeah.
Super proud of them and the work that they do with our kids.
Becky, can you help me understand that third bullet under federal grants? So like nineteen twenty and says we use seven one thousand, twenty twenty-one, we use forty-two. And then we're calling out, this is what we expect T E U's this year, yet we only are allotted, I don't know, fifties for next year.
Yeah.
So I, I can talk to it a little bit, um, cause we've earmarked and written the grant and the activities and so that is how much we've written in the state of the food for us to use for this school district. But this is the last year that we could use consolidated money where they gave the SAU one giant purse and we were allowed to delegate it based on needs. Next year, the money we got this year is earmarked um for Kensington and then money that we'll use the following, you have two years to use a grant. You have a two-year span, so you get it and then you have two years to expend all the money um by September thirtieth. Um, so that is like this year to support all the additional needs of students with special needs to supplement the great work the building is doing. That is how much we go to the grant to support these students. That's also why you see such a big bump for next year, cause you can't put that services in the grant. That is why it's in your local budget now.
Yeah.
Um, cause we do not anticipate the IEP needs of these students to change.
Right.
And everything in orange is legally mandated by an IEP team under federal law for these students to receive their education in their school.
Okay, I think too, it's a note to see the family survey that our parents returned,
Yeah, I was just reading.
that had a really high favorable rate as far as feeling like valued partners, uh, to the child's IEP team, and, um, I think that's important to highlight as well, because it is. I think, I think this kind of data is really hard in a small school.
Oh, yeah, yes, yeah.
Yeah. And I actually, I'm looking at the preschool numbers, and then kind of thinking what's happened in the last, you know, couple months in preschool, and we actually, I believe now, have six identified preschoolers. So that number has climbed up a little bit, which, again, is not, um, unexpected. I mean, I think why we entered into the, um, collaboration with Brentwood last year is because we were seeing an increased number of students coming out of, young, young students coming out of COVID who really needed a lot of supports, and.
Yes.
our numbers certainly reflect that at the preschool level.
Okay. Yeah, it is, yeah. Well, um, I just want to say thank you very much to our special education department and the team, because I think that it's, um, we have incredible supports here at the school.
Yeah.
It's, it's really something to be proud of. Thank you for putting this together, I'm really wanting this data, this.
A little snippet of data every month, isn't this fun?
Data form of every, it is fun. It's, but it's really, it's informative. It's incredible.
Well, I think it just highlights that you, your numbers for special ed stand down, but two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars had to be put back into your budget.
Right.
Because of changes at the federal government, not just, we're doing a great job of figuring it out.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Out of our control.
Yeah.
Which is super frustrating.
Yeah.
Super frustrating.
Yeah. Yes, it is.
Uh, I also have some cultural support, if you want to, I need to get this back as well, um, I'm looking at positive community and culture. I read about, um, the Hour of Code, which Mrs. McCarthy has given two community times in the month of December, um, to, to work on, um, coding with our students, and so our, our code is actually a worldwide event, there's, like, schools all over the, the world that are participating. Um, and it was just, we had the first one, um, last week, we have the next one tomorrow, actually. Um, and it was just really, really fun to watch all of the fellows in the multipurpose room, all working on coding activities together. Um, the other, like, secret joy to that, and for me, was that, oh my gosh, we got all hundred and thirty devices to work at the same time. Which is unbelievable, like, that's a feat I feel like we haven't, like, been able to accomplish for a long time, but we actually were all able to get online. Which is so cool, because we used to do whole school games of Kahoot all together, but, and so I was just really excited to have all the devices online and working, so. Um, it was great, the kids love it, the kids love coding.
Yeah, and they love it, yeah.
And, uh, we've got sort of our next installment of that tomorrow, um, and Mrs. McCarthy's put together another great afternoon for us, so. Um, meaningful learning, I was just highlighting our parade that we had last month, which was really all about, um, the kids' idea of creating a parade in Kensington, and it was adorable.
That was their idea?
Yeah, so they read the book, Balloons Over Broadway, and they're like, yeah, we're gonna do a parade in Kensington.
Oh my gosh, I love that, it was so cool.
So, they decided on, you know, what their, um, floats would be, we did have one float malfunction that morning, I think, but, um, and like their puppets, and then they each had, like, different entertainments that they could do, you know?
It was great.
How the parade stops along the parade route, and you do the entertainment, and, yeah. We had our emcee who did a great job.
Oh my gosh, what?
Um, yeah, and it was really.
That was amazing.
And, and, we snuck, like, looking down on us from above, like, it was hailing thirty minutes before the parade.
Yes. And after.
And started raining as the last act was going, so somehow, we snuck the parade in between the hail and the rain.
Yeah.
So, it was meant to be.
I'm just excited to see what happens with the kid who is the emcee, because that child, whoever he is,
Yeah, and.
he's got a career in, uh, in entertainment ahead of him.
Yeah, and so much of that was really outlive too, that was really, that was, I mean.
Yeah, that was really impressive, it was really.
They did a great job, just like, kind of keeping us all entertained, but really, if you look at the whole parade, like, it was so. The reading, the writing, the creating, the community, but, I mean, there was so much that the kids had to do to pull that parade together, you know, writing invitations for you guys to come, and, um, it was just.
Really, really.
There was so much work that went into that.
Yeah, it was, it was evident, it was really evident.
Really, the juggling, I mean. And then we just wrapped up December Dash, um, which, uh, formerly known as Jingle Ball John, um, our new, our new, um, name for it, we, we collected just over sixteen thousand, or sixteen hundred items, um, which was awesome. And then, um, the Exeter Bluehawks, uh, football team came on Friday to carry the almost seventeen hundred pounds of food into the van, to bring it down to, um, the food pantry, so it was, uh, um, it was nice for them to come and help us out and carry all of that, so. Again, it's just a great community event, helping our, our, um, local, local food pantries, and the kids, kids are a part of that, so. The kindergartners sorted it as it came in, the kindergartners had, they were sorting it into different categories.
I really love that you're including them in that, it's not just, my mom went out and got a whole bunch of groceries and then brought them to school, and I just wanted to.
Well, they might, that might have happened, but then once they get here, the kids physically have to, like, you're in the categories.
Right, right. Yeah. They're involved with it, yeah, and they see what is happening with it, that's great.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so it's always super successful, so, um, you know, something we'll continue to do each holiday season, I imagine.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. A new business?
We don't have any.
Old business?
Review that board member orientation.
Okay, I don't, I don't have any changes for you this month, guys, sorry about that. But, um, there was something that I had written on my notes on a piece of paper that I, I can see right where it's sitting on my counter. It's not in my hand. Um, there was something you were going to, oh, it was a, an explanation, you said that you had a letter that you sent to. Yeah, I forgot to send that, that's fine, that's fine, so then, once you get that, this is about, just for, you know, the thousands of people watching, this is a, it was a letter that you had already written, explaining the budget process, basically. So, I was just going to attach that, yeah.
Remind me to send.
Mm-hmm, that's fine, and then, I mean, I think we're, we're getting there, we're basically there.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I, I, yeah.
Yeah, it looks like you just, you had added a bunch of links last time, and just kind of cleaned things up a little.
Yeah, just to try to make it more compact.
Yep.
Great. Alright, so then, uh, maybe in, in, in January, I'll try to present the final.
Yeah, and then we can get it up on the website.
Yep.
Yep, great. Alright.
Okay, great, and then, uh, people-related matters?
We don't have anything.
Let me, just real quick, I don't have my book here. I was gonna add a note. January. Final, uh, right, orientation.
So, I'll, um, so I, I was saying, I'm, I use, so I sent last year's letter out on December twenty-first, so this is like about the time of year that I send this, so.
Okay.
I can email this to you, so you can see what last year's letter looked like, um, I think I still had some sentences in there about being in the gym for proper distancing and all of that kind of, if we were at Talbot, are we, are we at Talbot, or are we back, we're back here this year?
If you're just on this, kind of like.
We're back here.
Okay, so I'll, like, I need to edit that sort of stuff out of the letter, um, but I'll just email.
If you, I mean, if you're gonna send it out again in a, in a, in a week or two, then I'll, I will be on that mailing list, so, um, don't worry about it.
Oh, I've already got it up.
Oh, okay, alright. But I probably, should I just send it to you?
Sure.
So that I'm not emailing the whole board. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, uh, people-related matters?
Don't have any.
Okay, personnel?
You don't have any?
Okay, um, it's time to adjourn, our next meeting is January the eleventh, here, at the same time, same place. Um, we, do we have any need for non-public today? I don't believe so, okay.
That is the public hearing, yes.
Oh, yes, and, because we have our meeting.
First.
After? Or is it?
Usually after.
Hearing is, isn't, it's, it's a separate meeting that we have. We have the hearing, and then the town has their hearing. We, I don't remember last, I don't think we had a meeting.
We didn't, we, I don't think we did it, we must have moved it to a different night or something.
Uh, for your deliberative session, we did, we did deliberative session on our time that we did, so.
You did a deliberative.
Oh, yeah, 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 the hearing, I'm thinking of the deliberatives.
Participate in the town deliberative session, you do.
Yeah, I was thinking of the deliberatives.
We usually do a public hearing, then we do our meeting right after.
Oh, yes, yes.
I am confusing the two as well, too.
Yes, 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 yeah.
We always do. Deliberative sessions in February.
In February, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great, so, um, okay, so then we will see you at the next meeting, which is also the legislature hearing. And, uh, alright, I move that we adjourn at seven oh seven, what is sixty-one minutes, is how long?
It's a job.
I like it when things are like that, so, a second?
A second, second one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
You all.